Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Horsett Board meeting of April 23rd. Will you please stand and honor America and join me in reciting the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing tenure reviews?
So, second?
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. All right, our attempt is to be back by six, maybe earlier. Good evening, everyone. We are returning from executive session. And now we will open the public session of our regular business meeting and continue our budget discussion. So, first order of business, we've already done the pledge before going into executive session. So I need a motion for approval of minutes 2.01 through 2.04.
Second?
Curiosities, discussion comments?
Um, the March 13th, I would really know on those minutes. But that, I have the thing in front of me, so I'm assuming you put all four dates together.
So you're gonna vote no on 2.01, which is the March 13th one?
I, my computer's not working.
Okay, but, but that's the one you wanna vote no on, March 13th?
Yes, yes, March 13th, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's 2.01.
Oh, I didn't break that up.
And I'm just, and I'm the same.
All right, call of question, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we have the two candidate reporters, abstentions. All right, next we open it to community questions and comments. And it's my understanding we do have somebody that wishes to speak tonight. But before you do speak, I need to say a couple of words. This period will last for third minutes unless the board wishes to extend the comment section. Those who wish to comment, please stand at the designated microphone. State your name and address, adhere to the five-minute rule for speaking. And follow Board of Education policy 2370, which you can see in its entirety if you take your smartphone and snap it to your iPhone. All right, and lastly, it's not, this is designed for the public to comment, but not to really be a conversation back and forth between the board and the speaker. All right, thank you very much, and welcome.
Thanks. My name is Angie Ben-Lason, I live in Tendler Circle in America. The last time I was here to speak, I asked the board and administration to use their adding coaches to unify bowling teams next year. And I had also unheard, my words held down and had a run pretty quickly that there was a transparency issue in the room. I'm hopeful that the story I want to share with you enlightens the board and that you all were surprised, because I was when I left the room, and found out that the unified basketball teams also had a plan to be split with one coaching. Few individuals in the room knew that, and did share it, they did not choose to be proactive, they chose to, I don't know, thank you for my comments and shake my hand, and you were good when I left the room. I felt unheard and angry that my pleas were so quickly disregarded. In this circumstance, safety becomes a huge issue and a priority for me. I understand, oh, I posted on the unified Facebook page to let the parents know of the plan and encourage them to advocate and speak up. That move got action. After a lot of communication with Dr. Dove and Mr. Sext, I was committed to Ms. Kelly Swires. She helped create a plan that addresses my concern for safety, and I want to publicly thank her for acknowledging my frustrations, explaining the limitations in the situation, and working toward the solution. While we don't have what I consider true equity, being two coaches for each team, we do have supervision and support for each team, and that solution addresses my main concern for safety. I think all too often people complain daily, but rarely do things and credit moments do. So thank you, Ms. Swires, for supporting the parents and unified athletes in ensuring safety and support for this upcoming season. I would encourage the board to expect transparency from the administration. If an issue is brought to the table and there's already information out there that can address the issue, I really think it needs to be brought fully to the board at that time. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving along to section five. Report from the superintendent, or are you going to go directly into the budget presentation?
I think you all prefer me to go directly into the budget presentation.
Correct?
Members of the committee, members of our viewing audience, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Tonight, the main part of the superintendent's presentation is the proposed budget. We met, I think, last on April 10th, he gave us direction, and we appreciate it. As this board's budget is being developed, tonight is the final presentation of those discussions and everything that you've given us direction on that ultimately will lead to a potential adoption that will go before our community because they need the final decision. Unfortunately, New York State budget, if you pay any attention, they haven't been transparent at all. They haven't finished the budget that they said they were going to, now they say they're going to get done last week, this week. It's in the next week, and we're still not even in sight. So unfortunately, that puts schools across the state at a very big disadvantage. They can't give you the best number, and they have to go by most likely a lesser number than actually that they made see from the state. For us, we estimate it could be anywhere from zero to maybe up to $200,000. In fact, it has a definite impact on our budget. But at this point, because the state budget for school aid is certainly not finalized, we can't include it. So our numbers are what they were from the last, last presentation. You all know, and we have to remind everybody, schools only have a few revenue resources. One is local, and over the past several years, our local revenue resources never kept up with the rate of inflation. That doesn't mean it all has to be on to the local, but if you wanna maintain what you have, you have to keep up with the rate of your increases or the expectation of community. Just over the past roughly 10 years, the rate of inflation has increased by more than 21.23% of what we've been able to go by state law out with at 50% vote. Last year, the district had to go above that, otherwise face extreme cuts. We changed our budget process, and we heard from the community, they want, of course, that's the state, they're similar to where it is. That doesn't mean we have unlimited just to provide positions for any individual issue or program throughout a year. That's a good part of the budget discussion. In addition, we have a state foundation aid issue that they too have not kept up with inflation over the past 10 years. But theirs has come down a little, they have done some work on it over the past couple of years, hopefully they'll keep up with it. But we're still missing revenue of about 8.27% or 22.3 million. If you notice, between those two numbers, just by keeping up with the rate of inflation, we'd have roughly about $12.4 million. And we would not have a funding shortfall, we would actually have a funding surplus if we had to keep up with that. And no one's advocating that you have to, but you have to try to keep up with your year-to-year budget expectations and carrying costs. Our foundation aid history from the state, you can look, over the past several years, it was 3%, 3%. In the last two years, it was 10% and 5%. Those were the only two years that they went over the rate of inflation. This year, they're over the rate of inflation, but the amount that they're providing us is only 2%. You cannot keep up with a 3% expense growth on 2% of half of your 80. So something has to give, you either have to make reductions, or the state is saying the community's going to have to afford whatever they want in the program. So basically, we have to look at the budget as two pieces, a revenue program and an expenditure program. Really, when we look at our budget, we have a revenue problem, not necessarily an expenditure problem. When we talk about revenue, foundation aid, transportation aid, building and housing aid, and other aid actually decreased from last year. Now, how can that be when the state's giving us additional foundation aid? Well, because they changed all the aid categories and they're making control out of money the city spent. So for us, some is categorical, but if you look at this slide, the percent changes, we're down 0.4% in aid from one year over the next. So that is what develops the tax levy, the tax levy projections, as well as the need for revenue to support what we have here at Horsett. The tax cap calculation is another thing that, that sort of limits the projection of what a school district can do only by the mere statement that they need 50% if you stay at the 2% level, which that's the law. I really think it's 2%, it's not. The yellow line shows we are at the 2% level. That requires us to raise 46, or 26, 887 for this year's calculation. And if you keep going, we're allowed to finally raise 51, 357, 733. That's a proposed tax levy change of $3.537 million, or 7.4%. That's what the state says we should be doing, and it should only require a 50% voter approval to move forward. Now, the hard part is that didn't cover our full budget gap, which is about $4.8 million. So that's what's related to our revenues, have to look to a tax cap challenge. It doesn't mean it's bad, it means that if you give, as a board, and decide we're going to do what the community asks us to do from last year, which is to fund what we expect from the programs that we currently have, to do that similar move this year, we have to raise that revenue. Tax levy and tax levy rates, the district and this Board of Education has an actual exemplary track record. If you look up here from 14, 15, all the way to 24, 25, the tax levy rate was right around 1804 when I came in. It's now at 1594. People's assessments have risen because the value of the properties have been assessed by the state. And local maintenance values, I want people to understand this, it's not the school district that has anything to do with assessments. The assessment is what the fair market value supposedly is for your home. So if you added value or you've increased value, your expectation is that you have to pay more property taxes to support the needs of that added value. Now, is that always way true? No. Do you ever see assessments go down? Rarely unless you challenge them. But the assessments in the area are what's known as full market value. And the column, it's the fifth column over actual August tax rate for a thousand, is what the full market value rate is. And you can see, in 2019, 20, it was at 1804, just like it was in 2015, 16. But last year, it's at 1594, and that's 10 years of budgets. The capital projects have been here, and the rate has not come up above that 1804. It's been very much going down. Even with the capital projects, which are built in based on aid into the budget, that rate was projected to go up by $3 per thousand. But it never materialized because it's built into the budget and built into our capital and constructional operating cost. That's why we're at 1594. Not many districts can ever say they've done that. That's a great thing. And last year, remember, when we challenged, we said most likely it was going to be $12 to $24 increase on full market value. Well, when August came, it actually was not $12 to $24, but it was a negative $44 per 100,000 reduction. That's because these individuals right here work with the offices, the assessors, to try to give us the most conservative estimate of what our budget is going to have an impact on full market value. We will do that tonight. But you have to remember, we can only tell you what we think it's going to be, and that's why we're conservative now. And in August, we usually see a little better. You can't always promise that, but our trend is in that way because they take the most conservative approach, and I can't thank them more. Even though sometimes they push mobile and say, let's do a little more risky. They are still very much a team that works together to try to do the long-term best interest for the district, our students, and the board. Summarize budget revenues so that you can see, tax aid and state aid, other revenues, corporate income transfers, debt service fund. Notice, we were at 1 million last night, we moved it to 1.3 because we have 3.1, and we're looking at a 50% reduction if we go. We feel that's a comfortable number, it helps to bring the total revenues and the impact of 3.03% change. The average is around 4, 3.5 to 4. So if you look back, a lot of these, look at the percentages, were in line. Last year was the abnormal percentage. So as you go through this, this includes interest, admissions, rental, and donations, and the recommendations for future discussions. We, we're at the end of this discussion, so this is our best plan as we go through. The expense budget for '25, '26, we don't have an expense budget as long as everybody expects us to keep exactly what we have. There's a slight addition to this, but other than that, there's not much of addition, and we made major reductions of $5.5 million last year. The community was very supportive last year, and we appreciate that, to keep everything. What's proposed in this budget includes: it remains staff and programs strong, there is no reductions. It maintains all current educational programs in academics, arts, and athletics, based on current needs and enrollments, and contractual requirements, and investment guidance for any program that the administration addresses. In addition, we will have some continued sustainability of the Summer Learning Academy, previously that was grant funded. We will still be enhancing our multi-tiered systems of courses to ensure that each elementary building, after consolidation, has appropriate socio-emotional, academic, and behavioral support. This works by transferring some of our positions that we talked in hiring two intervention teachers, so that each building of the three will have four RTI intervention individuals at each building, which is stronger than we will have with that. We're allocating teaching assistance that we're in those interventions to increase support to primary grade levels. So we're not losing anything, but we're also trying to strengthen where we can for the resources that we have. And as we're going through a consolidation with this budget, this addition of one floating elementary assistant principal serves three elementary buildings for the increased staff needs, as well as the increased demand of the building to see how it's going as we talked about with the board of last time. In addition, this helps to rebuild and allocation of about $20,000 curriculum work from the $160,000 that we previously got. And last but not least, trying to ensure that as we go to three buildings, all students get similar educational opportunities before they play at each of the buildings. So that's what's really in the proposed budget, no losses, but it does come, as the board sets it to the board's budget, to ask the community to support in response to their support from last year and their comments from last year. They, people do Horsett schools, and they don't wanna see reductions. There's not a single administrator who wants to reduce. But I also have to give the warning, as we go through this, this is a summary of expenditures. But remember, our revenues are 3.03, our expenditures are 3.03 because they have to balance out. That's the only way, the only other way to balance them out is if there's not enough revenue, we would have to make reductions. So the budgetary gap, as you can see, is zero. 105 million in expenditure, 105 million revenue. The budget includes tax levy increase of 3.5 million. ERS reserve, we moved from 500 to 600. We know we had some discussions. We know that the projections for the end of this year, especially when we look at health insurance, that we did not have that crystal ball last year, allows us more flexibility, at this point, up to about 100,000. And we will utilize that for the benefit of the community and the budget. But at the end of the year, we always try to replace that, and that's one of the things that we will strive for. Ablor reserve, 200,000, other than that, there have been no changes to the fund balance. Million debt service, we increased from 1 million to 1.3. Yeah, closing measures, I had to cross off New York State aid, that would help, but unfortunately, we can't rely on that. They're saying, you're on your own until they pass the budget. We already crossed off everything, the board have a stated decision on the tax levy challenge. At this point, tax summary cap challenge, you can see, this was the information in our last meeting, this is important. At the last meeting, challenge amount was 1.4, debt service was 1 million, levy was 5175. The levy percent increased from year over year, does not mean that that's how much people's taxes are going up. That just means the change from one year to the next, 8.31. On that budget right there, if that was approved, the estimated rate, whole value rate would change on 3.68, and that is the percent that impacts what people pay. And that estimated rate would have amounted to about 63 cents per thousand increase on whole value for a home in Horsett. That would have taken our whole value tax rate from 1594 up to 1657. And the estimated rate increase on a $100,000 home, obviously 63 cents on a $100,000 home, 63 dollars. That was as of April 10th, when we said, once you made your decision, we will try to do the best that we could and build it even stronger position. My team finished up today with me as well in our discussions. And the proposed budget tonight has a challenge amount of 1.291 million, debt service use of 1.3. The levy is 51357, so the levy increase that we were able to bring down is 7.4. In addition, the rate changed, down from 3.68 to 3.03. We tried to get it below 2, it's just financially, we wanna make sure we have options for next year as well, and the year beyond with debt service. In addition, the estimated tax rate change per dollar went from 63 cents down to 48 cents. On a $100,000 home, that's 48 dollars, or less than $1 a week increase on whole value of $100,000. That tax rate goes from 1594 to 1642, and again, I have to make sure, if you see the bottom line, these are estimated based on the information as of today, final rates are determined in August. Our track record, or we are very conservative versus what it will actually end up. So, ladies and gentlemen, notice, I just took off the last one, I don't wanna confuse people. We'll put a red X on mine so that people know what happened there. But see that meeting, that was what you guys were okay with. We said we'd bring it back, that's the final proposed budget. Just so that you know, the bottom blue line is that final proposed budget compared to everything else. So take a minute and look at this, the tax rate changed about 3.03. If you look at over the years, 1, 2, 3%, and those years that were red are negative. They were only negative because of the change between May and August. All of them tended to be about 1, 2, 3, 4%, and then the final tax levy is what changed them. So we can only give you the conservative estimate. Just like you can see, the tax rate was consistently going down, we're saying that it will be somewhere around 16, I think, 1650 or something. And what happens is, in August, that could be the same place, slightly higher, slightly lower, or it could be right where we project. We try to take the most conservative, so at the most conservatively, we estimate the maximum on a $100,000 house is 48,000 per year. Ladies and gentlemen, 2025, '26 budget vote. Proposition one, adoption of the '25, '26 budget. Shout out to the proposed budget of Horsett Central School District for '25, '26 and the amount of 1,500, 105 million, 800,502 dollars be approved in accordance with section 2022 of the education law, and that the balance of said budget after applying public monies thereto be raised by the tax on the taxable property of said district. Adoption of this budget requires a tax levy increase of 3.537, 707 million dollars, which exceeds the statutory tax levy increase limit set by the government of $50 million and $50,66,480 for the physical year, school physical year, and therefore exceeds the state's tax cap and must be approved by the 60% of the qualified voters present. That money, which has to be there because it's basically saying we can't accept 50%, we must have 60%. So that's the law, it doesn't mean it's good or bad, it just means that's the requirement to passing our budget. Proposition two, is purchase buses. This requires only a simple majority. Shout out Board of Education, Horsett Central School District, be offered as to: one, quarter bus, school buses, at a maximum aggregate cost of 1.9 million dollars. Two, expend such sum for such purpose. Three, levy the necessary taxes therefore to be levied and collected in annual sums in such years and in such amounts that may be determined by Board of Education taking into account state aid. And four, in anticipation of collection of such tax issue bonds and notes of the district at one time or from time to time in the principal amount not to exceed 1.9 million, and levy a tax to pay the interest of said obligations with due. This is in a bonding situation, so that proposition requires 50% vote, and it is offset largely by our reoccurring bond repayments. In addition, '25, '26 Board of Education vote. Members of the Board of Education, vote up to three, or write in the names of someone else you would like on the school board. Candidates in the order of their names will appear on the ballot. First, Daniel Christmas. Second, Karashian. Third, Matthew Feinberg. Fourth, Nicole DeGerry-White. Fifth, Angie Ben-Lason. Six, Lizz Adele Wheeling. Seven, Mary Jo Glenn. A candidate forum will be held Wednesday, May 14, 2025, at 6:00 AM. The high school auditorium format will be similar to past years, but we are also putting out sample for questions from the public. You just have to appear on website, that will be also included in our website. Ladies and gentlemen, that is the budget that you asked us to present. The board should be ready for budget adoption at this point. Any questions?
I just... I just want a little clarification. From the last meeting, how many TAs and reading teachers do we have this year on four buildings?
Ten, our TAC providers.
What do you think, just tell me?
So we have currently total 10 of our TAC providers in our three, four elementary schools. So this is not going to be IS.
That includes TAs and reading teachers?
And then TAs, we have nine. And then TAs, we have nine.
So we have a total of nineteen?
Yes.
Okay. So, and then next year for the three buildings, there's only going to be fifteen?
We will have twelve instructional RTI teachers of the three buildings. And they're teaching assistants, I think, what is it, one? So why, the quantity is what you're referring to, a TA is not supposed to be supported in tandem and with the support of a teacher. It's allowed so to have the level of service as well as, which should be allocated additional students because of the number of, of, of the teacher can take on. Again, a TA is not supposed to have a core set of students themselves, they're supposed to support a teacher in their work. They do not provide first level instruction.
Okay, because I was thinking that there's the same number of kids, but there's probably three buildings that you're actually having less people.
Over increasing the teaching and instruction.
Okay, so you're doing it differently next year?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to clear that up in my brain. I had these numbers, they didn't add up to be, okay, thank you very much for explaining that.
Any questions?
Okay, yeah, I have a question, I have a couple of questions. So you're saying that the forty dollars that increase was per hundred thousand, so if you have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're saying your tax bill potentially could go up to seven, to seventy two, because you're adding, dividing and adding, so you could see maybe with a seventy two dollars.
I can only give you something that people can draw interest from. Yes, if you have more.
But it could be if, and you're saying that last year ended up that we were actually at a negative forty four. So you know, when I was looking at this today, this makes me feel nervous because as a person, when I get my tax bill, my tax bill went up quite a lot last year.
And your assessment went up?
Right, I understand. That people may not always, like I think I've said this before, say, oh, I know it's not the school district's fault. They just say a tax bill went up and then they blame the school district. Um, so.
If I can add, the reason why I.
This is at a minus forty four, so I know we're flipping and adding four dollars, so this makes me feel worried.
But let me, let me add one to this.
Yeah.
And also get to this point. That when you said people will sit there and say, my tax bill went up and it's not the school, that's why I said earlier, we have nothing to do and we cannot, and I'm glad we don't, to say your assessment's going up. It's just a matter of we did, we did raise that assessment, that's not how it's meant. We are only the purveyor of the rating program. We actually do not raise assessments, we don't do any of that. I mean officially, the only people that are raising that forty eight cents are the community members of Horset. They have absolute control. Now, when you see the negative forty eight, you can't really look at that, I mean negative forty four from the year before. You can't look at that because remember that officially it's supposed to be twenty four dollars. So we're about double from last year. Do you see what I'm saying? But that twenty four turned into a negative forty four because our twenty four was our most conservative estimate. Forty eight is our most conservative estimate right now. The reason why it went up is we used more debt service last year to offset that. We can't keep sustaining that. You try to get to a sustainable point that hopefully you can offset your budget through attrition over time. Which we know we have some attrition possibilities coming or breaking possibilities coming in a few years. We just don't know when that major hiring from thirty, forty years ago starts to phase in, but we have feelings it's in the next couple of years. So what happens is if that never materializes, sooner or later, the board and the communities don't have to make this decision again and say, do we want to keep what we have or do we want reductions? No matter what, sooner or later, either you're right sizing or you're right revenue. Because we don't really have an expenditure problem, we have a revenue problem. The expenditures meet everybody's needs, the revenues don't. There's only a couple places, grants, federal, state and local. The federal, you know what they're doing, nothing. The state, they haven't done anything, in fact, they're decreasing the savings more on the local community. And so the grants are only a way of account, so the only revenue source we have is local. And local will determine whether or not they'll support it or not. And if they choose not to, then what happens is reduction will be the outcome no matter what. That's one of the things after we get through the discussion, I have to go over what are the possible options for the board if this is successful, if this is not successful.
Yeah, so I mean, when I'm looking at that in the in-between, like I, I said, I understand that it's not going to be, I know it's not, you guys and all of your hard work and everything else, I understand that, um, assessments go up and it's not within the control of, of us per se, but the, the perception of if everything keeps going up and I think it's just going to be this trend for a while, people tend to not be as, um, forgiving with wanting to continuously pass challenges. Um, and then the in-between, I know that we had said, you know, bring us back a budget with, and it's with that assistant principal built into it. And a lot of the feedback that I got from the community was not happy about that. So I think that we should retract that from this budget and not add that in, um, because I am very worried about that and with all this, so I just wanted to be able to give that feedback and then.
Well, let me address that, just so we know, just sort of remembering numbers. Just so we know, the difference, the difference will be, it will be forty five dollars for. Forty five dollars? I think, we took that out, I think it's probably going to be forty five dollars for a hundred thousand dollar home versus twenty eight, yeah.
Right, I.
And just recall that.
I understand, I think it's just the perception of the newsletter of seeing that and I, I just feel worried. I'm giving my honest feedback of what I've heard from people, so that's what I can do. Um, and then I also do feel very nervous about, I understand what you're saying with, you know, consolidating now and having the teachers, but I do feel nervous about person to person ratio when it comes to having the, um, kids with teacher. I mean, yes, they are going to have more teachers, um, but I do think, you know, teacher assistant, even if they're not as, as necessarily like a, a teacher per se, having that one on one or a lower ratio of a student to person, I think is also better, so.
We would, I, I would tell you, we would all love it.
I know.
But our business is sort of that.
I understand, and I just wanted to be able to share my feedback, so that is my feedback.
Thank you.
You guys decide tomorrow.
So, um, so just a couple of comments, you know, I, I've been around the work for a long time and, you know, there's always concerns every year and, and we're always trying to estimate. Um, I, I will say, um, this is one of the best budgets that I've seen, um, from a really looking at it really, really closely, looking to see where we have all the opportunities. Um, you know, we saw the early slide, you know, we are so far behind in what we should be given from the state, right? And so we have nothing else to do but to make that up here locally. And the fact that, you know, we're going into this, into this, you know, we ended last year at a rate of fifteen ninety four, which is lower than any districts around here, right? And, and I know that everything is going up, so, and so even though it's fifteen ninety four, if your assessment has gone up and your property value has gone up, that's great for the future, but it's not hitting our pockets today and I, and I one hundred percent understand that, I, I feel the pain as well. Um, but in the grand scheme of things, no matter where you choose to live, you're going to get hit like that. And we are the lowest around here. Um, and, and my concern is that we also need to keep up with, with our facilities, with our education, with making sure we have the right staff, um, because if, if not, then we're also going to lose people, potential people who would be coming into the district. So as people look to move into this area, you know, particularly people that have families, they're looking to the districts and they want to move to where the best school district is. Um, and yes, they're going to look at the financials and they're going to look at the academic programs. But if we get to the point, if this, if this budget were not to pass and we had to start cutting, then in the long term, people are going to not move here, which is going to decrease all of our property values if we don't see the growth. Um, and so, you know, I think it's, it's looking at the big picture as well. And I know that doesn't always sit easy with people because it's, it's impacting their pockets today and I, I a hundred percent get that. Um, but this is, you know, this is the heart of our community, is our school district. And, and maintaining that high level of academic excellence, um, getting our facilities into the, in, into, um, you know, a desirable mode, you know, because we go to look at all the other districts around here, they all have the bells and whistles. And, and I, and I think we're doing the minimum of those bells and whistles, but we're, we're doing the best we can to, to get up to that same level. So I just want to applaud everybody who's worked on this because I do know, you know, this, this is really incredible work. Um, and I, you know, yes, I don't want to see it, you know, that rate go up, but I am confident, um, that this is, it, this is conservative and it, you know, we will see a lower.
Always have to caution.
I understand, I understand, that's just my prediction. It's my, it's my opinion and my, and my prediction, um, not really knowing what that would be. But I think the fact that we were able to add in the things that we added in to really help the students, um, and I, I think that's important. I do, you know, I am a little cautious about, um, you know, I've said in multiple meetings that I was in favor of the three assistant principals versus the one. Um, I think one is better than none, but I am cautious on how that's going to work. Um, you know, and how that is all going to logistically happen, so I think that's going to be a challenge, um, for you guys to figure out. Um, but I, I think, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm happy that there's going to be at least something in how, in how that's performed. Um, so overall, I'm, I'm in favor of this and, you know, and I hope that, um, the community really can see the odds. Um, you know, the, the potential increase, they can see the, the value that's referred to in the meeting, so.
Okay. I agree with what Christine said, and you know, I was an advocate earlier for three vice principals, but I just feel that that was part of our budget this year. It was stated in the newsletter, three new administrators, I think that would be very difficult for some people to accept. So I'll go with the one, hoping that it's going to work out, see how things go maybe in the future. Um, we could do that at three. Uh, but I have another question, really this has to do with budget, it has to do with the candidates forum. Could you just explain what the format is going to be, you said it's going to be a little different?
Yeah, the, the format of the, no, it will not really be indifferent. Everybody will be in their order, questions will be asked in order and then the rotation of who was first will step through the order and then be sent back. They'll have an opening of one minute, closing of one minute and so forth. Our board meeting's very long, this meeting may have to run a little longer just because of, I know last year we had a number of candidates and only thirty seconds doesn't give much time to answer, so we may extend a little. Uh, we estimate my control of everybody as well. But what happens is we have our standard questions and we will ask those, but last year we were asked several times, why can't we ask some questions? So we have to also protect individuals that are up in front of the question. You send in the question, we try to get general themes, that's what our community information specialist does and we try to make sure that the questions are fair enough, are valid and are not any incorrect.
So individuals in the audience will not be.
They can submit them, they will have the ability to submit it before. Like, we'll have an electronic way that they can submit them before, as well as if they're there, the questions will already be there, they can submit it and it, it might be one of the questions that are already asked or it might modify a question of how we ask, to try to make sure that we're not asking the same question, similar questions all over and over and over.
I have another thought, I have a.
Sure.
So I, I agree as well with the board member, Mrs. Dale, I think. I'm very strongly in favor of this budget. I think that it's compelling, the fact that our state aid is negative from last year. It's like not getting raised, not only not getting raised at work, it's like our salary was reduced, right? And yet we're still required, um, to deliver the program that the community wants to receive. And we heard last year what that was loud and clear. And we already have the lowest tax rate in the area. We've been very careful with the spending increases year over year to three percent, keeping them as minimal, primarily contractual. So to me, it feels like we've been, as a district, as responsible as possible in terms of being good stewards of the taxpayers' money. But we can't, we simply can't impact the, the aid side of the revenue equation. And so the only other option we have is to be, uh, as mindful as possible to increase the, the tax. And we've, I think it's, you know, when we started at the two percent, the two percent levy would have been.
Seven point four.
And we're at seven point four by use of other resources like the district, I'm sorry, the taxpayers' money and debt service, right? So we've used every arrow in our quiver in a very responsible way to try to minimize that tax burden as much as possible. But ultimately, it seems to be that in order to maintain the programs that our community wants, this is, this is the option we have. And it is true, as Christine said, you know, if, if an assessment goes up, that, that impacts what you pay in taxes. But that's not the district's, district's going to have anything to do with that. And frankly, it means that you are, at least on paper, wealthier because you have a more valuable asset in terms of your home. So I think it's a very well reasoned and, um, you know, budget that is trying to minimize the impact upon people while at the same time maintaining our programs. You know, we'd all like more of various aspects, but all that comes at a cost, right? And to me, this is striking the right balance between what we want to deliver for students and in terms of the additions we made without cutting. And so I certainly hope that through all our communications, that all of us will understand these factors and, you know, will come out to vote on May twentieth. But, you know, from my standpoint, I think I commend Katie and everyone for the work that went into putting this together and I'm strongly in favor of going forward with this budget.
And if I could say, you made a very good point, Mr. Stevens. Our initial budget for the tax level is seven point four seven. So we're actually with all the tools, lower than that. So if you think about it, at fifty percent, we would have made cuts. Now, without making the cuts, we're lower than where we were at fifty percent. But this is the thing in New York, we were now required a sixty percent vote. And that's one of the things that resonated last year. People who said we're actually lower than what we would have normally done at six, fifty percent, but remember all those cuts. And that's also important to know because if the board adopts this, if then really the board put out a budget, you, you met the requirement. The community then weighs in. If the community supports it, it goes through at sixty percent. If the community is fifty nine point nine, it fails. And then the board is going to have to meet again. And we are going to have to, as an institution, bring back every one of those cuts that we saw last year and more. That's not to put it out of the threat, that's just the reality because if the community says, no, the board really only has a couple of decisions and you have to do them in a short time, you could put out another challenge, the same challenge, you put up a little less challenge, right? You could go back to the two percent, which means we'd be putting out seven point four seven percent levy for fifty percent. It will have one point two million dollars in reductions. Or you could say, we're just going to go to contingent and not form a back out vote. That would require about four point eight million dollars in reductions. And that's exactly the story last year, except we were looking at six and seven million, do you see what I'm saying? So the budget is exactly what you're saying, but the one worry I have is nobody knows. But the one worry I have is nobody knows. Because last year, everybody knew the practical implication because we let people know, we go with the budget a little differently. Now, it's really the community decides, do you want us to bring those reductions back? And if you do, and the budget's defeated, most likely the board is going to say, we're not going to the challenge, we're going to go out two percent or even lower. And whatever that number is, we will bring the cuts and there is no discussion about it. Go with the cuts. Hopefully, you never have to do that, but I can't make the determination.
Hi. Team, I wanted to say thank you for the budget work. It was incredible work and it's hard, so I really do appreciate that. I have a question on slide sixteen, the tax summary, have challenge age?
Done?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you bring that center call, thank you? So we're looking at the debt service use volume. I understand why you brought three hundred thousand dollars over, but how is that decision made?
That decision is made by looking at our debt service, what we have projected at the end of the year. And I like to use a fifty percent, fifty percent, fifty percent. Last year, we did two million, that's why we came out at one hundred. We had to look at what can we carry out over a three to five year period to make sure we still have the ability to cover our last year, that if we're running on what we feel we can do and still have more for the following years. And that's with some minor adjustments for premiums where we add money in. But that's where, like, what I would tell you, the tax challenge is done from one million to one point seven, right? Because my job is to try to pass the budget. Ultimately, we have to look at the rules, the regulations, how we try to make money for the district and so forth. That's the number that we felt most comfortable with at this point.
So if state aid comes through?
Yep.
And we have more to work with on that?
We will not change anything at stage one point three because if state aid comes through, we'll have more money, but we don't get to spend that more money, it ends up being surplus at the end of the year. Which, for us, is not it because we don't really have that district's surplus. So that's the casualty of legislators not getting their budget done. But hypothetically, we could say, oh, we think we're going to get two hundred thousand, they give us a thousand, and now our budget's one hundred ninety nine thousand dollars short of money that we said we're going to spend, so we can't play that game as well.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I appreciate all the work that your team has put into this as well. This is my first year going through this. And so the process was very smooth, so thank you all for that. I have the, I have the same question that Michelle asked about the debt services, so thank you for answering that. But then, I do have a concern about the challenge and the sixty percent that we'll have to issue. I mean, going back to back years with that. My, I think I would feel more comfortable presenting something without that additional admin in for this coming budget. I know it's only a three cent difference, but three cents isn't a lot, I recognize that. But it's, the people are looking at it and saying, we told that we didn't want any additional hiring, we want to maintain what we have, we don't want to see taxes go up. I think it might go over better if we didn't have that added in this year. And I know that it's going to be a hard thing for the principals at the elementary schools to not have someone. But I think Frank Stahl, I would feel a little bit better being a little conservative with that hiring and not rushing to do it and go on the other side. And really looking at saying, hey, we're at forty five cents, then for a little bit, you know, we're hearing what you're saying.
No, I will tell you, that's why we asked that question last time, to make sure the board, and I do believe the board in that, this is said included, so that's why we built the budget that way.
I understand.
To rebuild it tonight, you're going to be waiting two to three hours. I understand that, if that's what the board decides. I can tell you also that the community may not realize, I think they do realize, last year, we made a reduction of three level administrative positions. We were already pretty much the lowest administrator per capita per student of the sub- tiered districts. Those three reductions made us even lower. This is not a district level, those were primarily district levels. So if this is more building levels for, that's the best thing. I can tell somebody in my house, when I'm talking to you, I'm going to tell them. I'm not here to advocate for more administrative positions. I'm here to just say what parties need and what the board has asked us to do. So I'll leave that to the board at the second.
I will deliver the point, but I do agree with my colleagues who are fully in support of the budget as it stands. Team, you did an amazing job and it was awesome to see this shift in the way that we did it. And it really, this is this year, so I really appreciate that. But I would be in favor of the budget as it stands right now.
Just back on the addition of the administrator. I think it is really important to really emphasize, last year at this time, how many administrators we had across the district and through attrition, through, through G O roles and things like that, what that net changes, right? Because that net change is negative. And it's also, I think, it's not really adding another administrator at the elementary level. We're going from four schools, from four schools each with a main principal, down to three schools with three main principals and an assistant principal, right? And so I think that what really needs to be emphasized is that that net change in overall administration, but then also the fact that the student to principal at the elementary level ratio, right?
It is.
Right. And so, you know, I think those are important things. It's not just, we're adding an administrator, right? And I think there's a lot of explanation that needs to go into that. So, you know, as we're talking, as people are asking us questions about it, you know, we have the community forum, different opportunities. I think there, and even if there's an opportunity to put that in the newsletter.
Oh, we have four pages.
So, but like, to make that really clear, that it's, we're not, we're not increasing overall. I also, you know, last year when we were going through the budget, you know, we had to have these meetings in the art dorm room because we were getting tons of people coming to every meeting and coming up and voicing their concerns. And yes, we all might hear things in the community, but we have not seen people coming voicing their concerns, right? And I think, you know, I, it doesn't mean that the concerns aren't out there. But I also, you know, I would be really disappointed if all of a sudden we had this, you know, surges of, no, we're going to vote the budget down, when there was nobody coming to really talk about any concerns that they have. Because we've been having these meetings over and over and over again for a few months. So just want to ask.
I will tell you, like, I was superintendent, had to do this in the first year right up against the government, in the government background. It wasn't easy. There was a lot of staff layoffs at that time, and it raises the tenor of everybody and what they want. At that time, the community would come out and say, we want to stop cutting, this is enough, tell us what you need. That made that vote probably successful. Last year, my experience was, the way we did it, we need to be straightforward and let people know. It raises the tenor, brought people out. We had one of the highest vocals last year because of that. Not necessarily because of the viewpoint one way or another, but because of the fact people have to decide, really, did they want the reductions or not? And if they didn't want the reduction, they had to vote one way. And if they did want the reduction, they voted another way. The vote was handled and it passed. This year, what concerns me, there's not a lot of tenor out there. But tonight's meeting is hopefully going to help people understand because I have to give the board the warning, and I've already sort of given it. This is what will happen if it's successful. This is what will happen, you heard me say it, if it's not successful. Pretty much the custom last year would be re-engaged and we probably have to have a little bit more. If we want contingency, we would have to cut four point six, four point eight million dollars to the prescription. We can't have to put them in different things, nobody can use our facilities, different things like that. So it changes it, but that's just a rough figure. I do believe in our newsletter, we've got to do a question and answer so people understand what is positive, what is negative. We can't tell on which way because that's not our role. So that is one of my concerns right now. And I will tell you, no districts have done it two years ago.
I know this was just sent to you, but I think it's really important that in our communications and our newsletter, we stress the nature, not only how our administrator ratio has gone down and where we're, you know, where we would be with this ad, right? But I know administrator is sort of like a dirty word. It's like in the corporate world, artwork, it's, you know, management, right? Like, it's easy to see us tied, but we're not talking about a person that's going to sit at a desk, you know, with their feet up and sit at the computer. We're talking about a person who's going to walk across the halls of an elementary school building, who's going to deal directly with teachers, deal directly with students, deal with school resource officers, meet with parents, plan special events, oversee teachers. Like, we are talking about someone who's the lifeblood of a school building. They are an administrator, sure, but they are so much more than that. And if the community unfortunately sees on the word administrator and votes against this budget, it would be the most quintessential example of biting off your nose and spiking your face that I could think of, right? And I'm not trying to be condescending, I just, we really need to understand, we are adding a resource to support this transition in our elementary school program. And that resource will be doing all of those important things that happen in elementary schools. And so I just think that's something we really want to make sure we communicate and make clear so that people see the value the staff will bring at this minimal compensate thing. And that's your personal opinion about voters' determination, but that's your statement as a board member as well. So we've got to be very careful that we can't guide whether they should vote for it or against it. And I know that wasn't your intention, just because we're. But I hear your point.
Yeah.
In the newsletter, we will try to help people understand that, I will say, no administrator sits behind their desk, but the key point, every administrator is an educator. Yes, yes. And what I meant was, we heard, and we talked about it in the last meeting, there is a risk. Might it be a risk as to whether or not the budget would pass because of the addition of an administrator? My point was, I think it's important we communicate the nature of what that ad is to offset that concern.
Sure. Ms. Dale?
I have a comment going back to the candidates forum. You know, we already had kind of started off with that conversation. But I would like to add, Katie, first of all, I would say, I think it's great that the community is going to be allowed to put questions in. But I would also, I think I heard you mention expanding the amount of time that candidates can speak. I know that we have spent it running and that's a big amount, but I think the time is worth it. I feel like in the past, folks have just started to get going and answer a question when the time is up. And I would really like to advocate for more time for that to speak.
We'll see what we can do. I mean, we have tried the community survey to get questions before, and the last time, maybe we got no questions, so we have to think all the other questions up. I don't know what it would be like, but really, the number of questions and different themes is what really, we try to use to predicate how much time, based on the number of people. If you had four and you had ten questions, hey, that's a problem. When you got seven and you got forty questions.
But I think we have to be mindful of that, you know. I think we need to be aware of the fact that this is being recorded, that people can go back and re-watch. But I think people need the opportunity to be able to have their voice heard and to be able to speak up. In one minute of introduction, you're like, hi, my name is so-and-so and I live here, right? And then when you get into a session, when you start to get to the meat of them, their time is up and it's over, and they've barely scratched the surface of what their viewpoints are. And I know that I would like to hear more. Just saying.
See what you do.
I don't want to repeat all of the comments for those that support the budget and support what the work has been that the administrative team has done. But I would like to emphasize a point that Christine brought up when she was speaking. And that is, of all of the districts we compare ourselves to, we have the lowest tax rate. And so the community is getting a great deal. And I think we need to emphasize that. I know nobody likes to pay taxes. I think my history background says, Cardinal Wishenmu from French Street said that taxing is like plucking a feather from a goose. You want to get it out without the goose squeaking? So hopefully, we can get money without the goose squacking. But I think this is an excellent budget and I think you've got to house community there.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to kind of say, again, what you were saying, the tenor is much different this year than it was last year. The tenor of the world is much different than last year. There is a lot of things that are different, and so that's why I'm a little, and, you know, I raised my hand, I said, yeah, I took that administrative position. But I have a lot of people who give me feedback. And because we don't have people coming here, I think it's important as a board member to share the feedback that we're getting, you know, because I'm nervous about having. I agree with everybody, it's a very small amount. I think that a building administration person is very worrying. I did say that last year, and I think they do. I don't think, you know, with one of these assistant principal positions that was being, you know, maybe caught from last year's budget. But I'm nervous, and I'm much more nervous this year that we'll have to... I'm nervous that this is the straw that might break the camel's back, and I don't want to see that. And the reason I am nervous is, again, because I grew up here and it was austerity. And I don't know where that tipping, where that breaking point is. I just don't want to, I'm just very nervous. So I want to be able to voice that concern because it's a real one.
Anything else you want to mention? Well, I'll go.
This is on the candidates forum, just to kind of piggyback. I know it can be risky, but I feel like when there are people in the audience listening, when they listen to some answers, it might prompt them to have a question, right? And so if there were a way to be able to take questions from?
We have rule cards that we've used before. But I will tell you, the reason why you don't just take questions from the board is individuals can come, target, individual or others. And that is a very real thing, so we need to have some semblance of control and protection for the candidates that are there. I'm not saying anybody will be need, but we know that that can happen. So if anything, follow-up like that, we would have people, probably going to be carrying on it, but our students run it, I'm not putting our students in front of that situation. But if we can help by follow-ups, we would have no problem trying to do that.
Yeah, I just think, you know.
Only if you're being watched.
Yeah, and being a part of it last year too, you know, not only was it Yeah, and being a part of it last year too, the, you know, not only was the time hard to answer, but the overall time of the forum was answer, was short because there wasn't a ton of questions. And, and I think um, the, the, the questions that we had were so generic um, that it was really hard to kind of really get into what does this candidate believe and what are their points and, and stuff. So I do encourage us to look for ways to enhance that.
I don't know, Sam is back there, okay?
Okay, sorry. I did forgive him making a comment on that. When I ran, it, they did have people ask questions that year. They came up and the community members came up and asked, I think directly, or they had a card.
No, they had a card.
They had a card and they didn't get it in, yeah. So we did.
Yeah, but we did, we did sort of that um, modification of some of the wording. It was, like, we had some questions that were directed for one candidate, but we can't do that. Because that's not fair to every other candidate and it could be a targeted question to put the candidate on the spot and yet the other candidate still get a chance to answer. So we try to use it with a professional decorum that we wish everybody would use out there. And it's not a debate, it's more of a debate to know. But I think that format will be sort of center.
Okay.
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 This is the first time I've been shorter than you guys.
I've been sitting here deciding whether or not I should say what I'm feeling. I have been thinking about a lot, um, and I don't, I'm going to cut it by saying it's not personally directed editing. I don't, I'm nervous about things. So I hope you take this the right way. You are the patriarch of your family and we, we've been friends for a long time. And I hope we still are. But I have a little problem with the idea if one individual on our board candidates list is elected, we're going to have three people from the same immediate family on our board, which means when it comes to a vote, one-third of the vote, nine by three, is going to be for members of the same family. And I just find that a little unnerving and it's not directed. I mean, it could be Christine's family, Dan's family, Aaron's family, my family, but I, I just, I'm uncomfortable about it.
You have other com-? Well, I'm waiting for the board for the floor, so. Well, ladies and gentlemen, like I said, I have to remind everybody of the dates. There will be a public hearing inside at 6:00 PM at the high school auditorium. We do livestream it, we really would appreciate people coming out. Uh, and it will be recorded like everything else that we do. Because I hate to say it, we can always hear the word transparency. We're the most transparent district in the entire Southern here. We're the only ones that started our lectures three months ago. We're the only ones that regularly livestream our, our board meetings, have our discussions, handle everything. Anything that is out there, we try to put up as much as possible. So we had that question last year over and over, and I hope people understand, we try to do this for everybody. Uh, so on Wednesday, May 14th, this is board education candidate forum night. Definitely as transparent as possible, and thank you for your things. That will be livestreamed and recorded. And in addition, one thing we can't do is livestream the vote. Uh, it's just a problem. But uh, the budget vote collection of members of the board of education will be between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM uh, here at the high school. Unfortunately, this part of the building will be going through construction at that point. So we moved it from the south gym to the north gym. Same application, just to drive a little harder down. Well, Mike and everybody will have that all set up so people know where they're going. So if wanting to hit come like you would normally be regularly coming to vote, you'll be directed right where to go. So it should not be anything uh, too much of a inconvenience. We will seek excuses at lunches and so forth, but they like seeing everybody coming in too. So focus on the district events. Again, on Tuesday, May 20th, if the vote is successful, we will forward. If the vote is unsuccessful, we will have a board meeting, I think, that Thursday. And the board will be forced to make some decisions rapidly. There will be some special meetings. If it wasn't successful, we will be bringing forward all of the potential reductions. And everything we added, obviously, is removed. We are going to that. So we, I can only say, I hope we never have to face that situation. But ultimately, if the board approves of the whole budget tonight, you have done your fiduciary responsibility. You have done one of your two major obligations. And then it's up to the community to ultimately decide the decision of the district. Because ultimately, we're the only ones that can decide the financials. So I commend you for your steadfast work over three months to get to the point as well as your guidance and your discussions. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, we're ready to move forward. This is on Barsky asks a wonderful question. A budget hearing, would I do this whole thing over again? Yes. There's actually more because we have to sort of regurgitate the whole process in case people know because we're getting the whole thing. Some of the slides will be a little different, but for the most part, a lot of them will be there. I will tell you, if we have a lot of people here, we'll go through the whole thing. If we have no one here, we'll go through sort of a annotated version. And then also tell, please refer to all of our websites, because everything we've done is online. No other school district does what we do. So, and that's because of.
But it's without board discussion?
Yeah, a budget hearing is just a hear from the community on what's been approved by the board. It is, there is no changing of the budget at that point. It's just your community's position. Hopefully they were doing it through that. Sorry, we got to do it.
All right, so this is going to be really quick. Um, you've seen your board docs, this presentation, as well as the proposed um, board evaluation template. Um, so I just want to run through um, at that level, kind of what our committee did, um, the process we used, the results we came up with, and just some examples of how we made some changes. So the directive that we had from the board was to form a new board self-evaluation instrument for use during the 24, 25th year. Uh, the committee was Douglas, Liz, Aaron, Sue, and myself. So we met four times, um, and the process we used, so we reviewed the current board self-evaluation template that we used. We removed items that were not appropriate or unclear. Um, one of the issues that we had in the past is that when you're reading um, the, the different evaluation items, it was really unclear the question that we were asking. And were we thinking about it as individual board members, as a full board? So we went through all of those and we did remove ones that we thought we, we needed to remove. We also identified the ones that were important, but they needed a rewrite um, to make it, to make it more clear. We also reviewed the NISPA self, self-evaluation guidelines. Um, so NISPA does have a template that they have out there for districts to be able to take from or, or just adopt as is. Um, remember, everything that NISPA puts out are really, you know, recommendations, they're not requirements. So we did look at the NISPA template and we identified items that should be included in the board's methods for self-evaluation. In some instances, the NISPA was very similar to what we had, but it was just worded better. Um, and we really liked their wording better than ours, um, so we adopted that in the proposal. Um, we also looked at the operational manual that we put into, into place last year. Um, because there was a lot of things in there that really talked about how we should um, act as a board, how we should um, do things as a board. Some of it was already reflected in our current evaluation, but not all. Um, and so we identified those items that we needed to add in. Um, in doing all of that, uh, we, we merged everything. And when we merged everything, we had, you know, like 20% additional items, which we were like, oh my gosh, you know, Sue actually didn't count um, for us. Um, so we, we really looked at that and we consolidated where appropriate. We removed duplications because we had a lot of that. Um, we also created a detailed rubric um, for each evaluation item based on the Danielson framework for teaching rubric, which is the first time I saw that. So we were really happy that Aaron brought that to us. Um, so instead of answering questions as yes, no, or I don't know, um, we actually will look at it through a rubric, looking at it, the one to four scale, looking at unsatisfactory, basic, coefficient, and, and the standard. So it gives us the opportunity to actually get a numerical scale um, and, and a final score for each of the elements. And then we're able to, be able to look at that data over time and look for trends um, and, and be able to see where we have opportunities for improvement. So the results, um, we ended up with a proposed template with 43 evaluation items and four open-ended questions, which was down by two evaluation items and one open-ended question. So we actually made a slight improvement on the number. Um, but we also really, I think, upped the game by, by putting in that um, one to four rubric scale. So just an example, uh, just so the community can see and people here in the room, kind of what we're talking about um, and how we took it to the next level. So one of our current evaluation items was, the district has plans to maintain and update facilities. And the way we scored that in the past was, it was either a yes, no, or don't know. Um, and, and really that, the way that was worked was really the district. It wasn't, it had nothing really to do with the board, that the board had a responsibility there. So we rewarded that, say that the board reviews the plan to maintain and update facilities with the district. And then we put in that rubric that there's no review of the plan, there's an occasional review, there's a regular review, and then there's a thorough and proactive review. Um, so that's kind of how we, we evaluated all of the um, the levels of the rubric. Another example where we had a different type of scoring on the, on the current one, the board of education provides a periodic review of finances, enrollment programs, and capital needs. And the way that we would score that in the past would be always frequently, occasionally, never, or don't know. Um, my definition of frequently could be very different from Christine's definition of, of, of frequently. So we wanted to really kind of have, you know, what are those operational definitions around all of those um, different areas or, or levels of scoring? So we revised that one, say the board needs a long-term planning, areas of finance, instructions, staff, and capital needs. And then we, we looked at, you know, one would be there's no long-term planning. A two would be there's limited, a three would be that there's effective long-term planning. And then a four would be that there's comprehensive and strategic long-term planning. Um, in some of the, the rubric for the items, um, we might say that it's, you know, it's none, it's um, it's some, it's most, or it's all. So it gives us a little bit more of, of a definition to allow us to really be able to score the item. Um, so those are just two examples. You see the full template um, in your, in your document. So really our next step is, if any of you have any feedback, um, we're, we're open and welcome to take that feedback. We will then reconvene um, for another committee meeting to evaluate any of the feedback and incorporate the feedback that you might have. And then we'll come back to the main meeting with that final version for adoption. Because then um, we will then all be filling that out prior and, and having the opportunity to review um, any second session at our meeting. Any questions? Any, anything else that any of the committee members want to add?
I, I just want to highlight that I think the board work really, really well together. It's impressive. How much we got accomplished in such a short amount of time?
We laughed a lot too, we were fun.
So um, I have a question or some feedback. I um, when reading over this and then there are some questions, um, obviously I can't include all of them or maybe not be too, or maybe I should email them, um, about some of the questions. It just seems very, um, some of them seem very pointed as if it's like people trying to give a score to an individual as opposed to the board's whole, some of them. Um, the other thing that I found would be very helpful is to have the old previous one, like when we get the first read for policies, you can see what was taken out and what was changed. I don't know if you guys have that available to be able to review, but that would be something that would be very beneficial, I think. And I, I um, do like how you guys tried to make the shifts to give more of a breakdown um, for it. And I don't know if the only board comment section will be at the very end in those questions or if um, there is like another option instead of like a one, two, three, and four, if there's like a comment section in the back of, for each of the questions if they, if somebody wanted to be able to share feedback about that because maybe it's not a one, two, three, or four. Maybe it's a somewhere in between or, you know?
Yeah.
But yeah, so.
Okay, let me answer.
You got all that?
So, so we really weren't trying to make it where an evaluation item would be directed at anyone individual board member. Um, the discussions we had, you know, we were very deliberate in the words where we were, in, in some instances, it was the board as a whole. In other instances, we, we said board members, right? Um, and we, we really aren't trying to target, but um, you know, if we, if we talk about, you know, board members do this, then that's we would say, okay, none of the board members do this. Some of the board members do this, most of the board members do this, all of the board members do this, right? Um, and yet not, not really trying to direct it, but most of those, we were trying to align into our operational um, document that we have, right? Um, so you know, if there's any specific ones that you, that you think we need to look at to potentially change the wording, um, please let us know that. Um, as far as the um, having the ability to look back, you know, we, we have an Excel spreadsheet that has multiple workbooks um, on all the iterations that we made, right? Um, so we, we definitely can, I'm not sure how easy it would be to follow. Um, I had some kind of crazy color coding going on in it, um, that I think we all kind of understood at, at the time. Um, but we, we definitely can put out there what the old version was versus the new version. Um, we did group things a little bit differently, so we changed like the headers of the groups and we, we tried to do some consolidation. Um, and then, so, so we can definitely make that available. The other one around um, uh, adding comments, I think that's a great idea. I don't know if we would add comments after every one, but maybe after every section. We can have an open field for comments and then just cover the instructions that you can, because each item is numbered and you can just put in there, you know, if you have a comment on number two under board relations, then you can put your comment in that comment box. So I think that would be a really easy add to be able to, so I think that's a great idea. Elder committee members, you, I don't want to speak for all of you.
I think you summed it up, how we worked with the committee. You summed it up well, I think you did keep us on task. We definitely had discussions about different things and we changed different things, so um, and it was, like you said, board members or we tried to put the right wording in so it's not targeted at anybody when they vote out.
I'd want to just thank the Liz, Aaron, Sue, and Christine for being on the committee. I appreciate the time you put in to try to help improve the board evaluation. And I think it's a fantastic format and the idea of using a rubric where we assign scores so that we can kind of get a numerical value and see how that changes over time. Plus, the options of, you know, never, some, all allows us to kind of differentiate out when before a yes, no is a very binary response. So I like the format. Now I'll reread the specific questions, bring up any, any feedback, but I'm very thankful for what the committee did and I think it was great, thank you.
If, if you do, excuse my summary, um, for those who can do have feedback, could you just send her feedback to Terry and then she'll, she'll report it to us? And then I would ask you to do it um, by today's Wednesday. Um, if you can send it in. If you can send it in so we have it by Monday, so then we can schedule another meeting. There's a lot coming up with, you know, all the different budget hearings and candidates for, but we want to make sure that we get a committee meeting, so we can then bring the final version to vote at the main meeting. Mary Ann?
Big thank you. Many years of doing the evaluation, and this just sounds so much better. And I know evaluations that I get to the university, they use the rubric, and it's so much easier to find the one that really means what you want to say, so if you want to hear about it, please.
Any others?
I'll wrap up by saying I concur. I know I struggled with words like mostly, frequently, sometimes, and as you indicated, as you spoke, for everybody, that's frequently means something different, so I think it's much, much, much improved that. So thank you to the whole committee, and thank you for chairing, Christine.
Absolutely. Like I said, you know, we all, we worked together really well, and we had a little bit of fun in doing it also, so. All right? Great, thanks.
All right, so moving, moving to section six, which is the finance items for action. I need a motion on six point zero two through six point five two.
Salute.
Second.
Katrina?
I have a question on the changeover logs, page number five, for the additional sidewalks.
Is there the big flat?
Let me scroll up and see.
Is that six point five two?
Six point five two, yep. And when you go into it, hang on, oh, I slipped off that. Those are big flat alterations.
Yep, owner request.
For thirty-four thousand.
Yep.
Yes.
That does span a hundred foot of sidewalk to the aid and blessing in transportation for next year, safety and security.
Okay, but because there isn't a sidewalk here right now?
Sure.
Okay. So that was my question on that, and then also, who needs yours?
Trying to think of the new doors that are, that's the new door, Chad, that's the new door for the back entry into the library?
Correct.
Or the new door into the loading dock that we're wrestling out?
There's two doors on it that we actually have on there. One is behind, it was a very old door, been requested between the entrance to the cafeteria and the new library. It's the only door in that whole section we didn't do, and it stuck out like this door gum, and we're lucky at this time to put in the door. It's the main door where people walk to the company.
Okay. That's just, those are my two questions. Thank you.
One of the things, and they're good questions, I mean, one of the things is we've tried to take the man from the board, both Mike and I, so that the committee knows when we make these owner requests, we're trying to do the project right, not just do and finish the project, so that Mike and I won't be here forever, but somebody comes in and says, boy, they stuck us down the road and not fixed something that we have the ability to. So whenever we do see some of those things, an opportunity, sort of like a car road with the doors, we try to make sure that we enhance the environment for the long haul, not just the short. I have a question here. Just a second. That's six point five oh. Do me a favor, hit recycle. Everybody, just because Warren doesn't have the proposed budget in and might have got added?
Just like I said, right now, the board is pushing a loading document, now if you can you recycle.
What happens is just so you know, the little half-round thing up in the upper left-hand corner by the menu bar, if you hit that recycle, it'll bring in to a file.
Six four nine and six five oh.
And what the reason for this is, is because until the board says we're okay, we can't load the official number in there, and that's what was going on once we got there. Are you all set, Terry?
Yeah.
So if you've done the reload, and you just go back in, go to the agenda, new agenda, and then go to six point five oh, you should see the budget in there. Six point five oh, public contact, proposed budget. And then that has the line item budget in it, and has been developed on the final budget And it has, take Katie, it also has all the correct language for a channel budget.
Correct. The revisions from the legal notice incorporates the language to challenge, protect, study, regulation, and establish a resolution to adopt the proposed budget.
Okay. So that's the official numbers at this one.
I'll abstain on six point one one and six point one two. Call Russian, on favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I, I'd oppose the six point five oh.
Abstentions.
I'm going to abstain from six point five oh.
Moving to section seven, HR recommendation, seven point zero two, can I have a motion, please?
Smooth. Second.
Inquiries, discussion, comments?
I need to abstain from letter Y, I believe it was letter Y, I don't remember.
Yes, letter Y.
Is it letter Y? Yeah.
I will abstain from letter Y also, because my husband's retired from that, from the bus.
Mary Ann?
Sections J and K, J one, bachelor science in progress, what are we talking here? Freshman sophomore, do you receive, ready to graduate, just started?
Not ready to graduate.
Not ready to graduate, okay. And also, K one? Through for grade four teacher? The other ones up above seat have listed their degrees and such, but there's nothing listed for her. She's a certified teacher. Okay. All right, I will be voting no on J one.
Call question, on favor?
Aye.
We have the opposed?
Yes.
And any extensions?
We'd like to congratulate the transportation unit of the AFL-CIO on the ratification and agreement of funding their agreement, that'll be finalized through HR, and we want to thank them for collective bargaining agreement of moving forward in that direction, which was also already incorporated into the budget.
And I'd like to wish Kelly Davis, as I'm sure the rest of the board would, a long and prosperous retirement, and enjoy your retirement. And I'd like to welcome aboard, although they may start at a later date, our five probationary appointments, Sarah Jika, did I say that correctly?
Jika.
Jika, all right. Nathan Wilsoncroft, Andrew, Andrew Fudala, Christian Robinson, and Nicole Kistner. All right, miscellaneous items for action, I need motion eight point zero two through eight point zero seven. Curiosities, discussion, comments? Liz?
I need, I need to abstain from eight point zero three.
Call a question, on favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
I, wait, I, I missed something.
Okay.
I believe I have to abstain from eight point oh four to eight point oh five, I thought.
Actually, those are our contractual rates for any and all collective bargaining agreements.
Some of it.
You would receive benefit from, along with equity grounds.
And more.
One, two, three, four. You don't, so if you want to have to refuse from eight point oh four, but eight point oh five, you would, you would, you would, Katrina, so I need five to affirm that.
We have.
You get medical, that, that's the reason.
We need, we need like, you said.
You have five.
You have five.
As long as you have, I, I just want to make sure everybody knows.
Two, three, four, and six five.
I don't think I got it.
No, I'm counting to five.
Oh, you're not?
I'm counting to five.
I'm just trying to make sure I get that.
Katrina?
Yeah, you did, yeah, I said it.
Yeah.
I should abstain from those also, because now I don't see other names.
You don't put your payment interest directly from, it's just an appearance of it, right? It doesn't mean you.
So I should abstain from eight oh four, eight oh five?
I can't tell you, that would be your choice.
Okay.
Sorry, I, I don't think you would have to if you are not now covered by the client. And if they're not, then you're not in position.
We need to vote. We need to vote. All right, so, all in favor?
Of what?
All right. But when I hit the extensions, we'll hit the extensions for six, eight point zero four and eight point zero five.
And three.
And three.
And three, that's three.
And three.
All right. So maybe we should do the extensions first. All right, Liz is abstaining from eight point zero three. Abstaining on eight point zero four. Erin, myself, and...
They don't, they don't have dental.
Okay.
At, well, I'm sorry. They now have dental, but not our name, so you're fine.
Well, I, I don't know.
Eight point zero five, abstentions. Erin, myself.
I can abstain just to be safe in case, so that's why I abstain.
And Sue.
Well, I don't, I just.
All in favor, Bianca?
Aye.
All right, moving along, section nine.
Thank you.
Policy Committee, the meeting was canceled last month, so there is no report, so there is nothing for first readings. For the President's Report, today is the Admin Professional Day, so verbally, I would like to recognize all of our staff that fit into that category, and I will single out tonight Terry and Candy, who we certainly appreciate all of their hard work every time we gather, they are with us, so thank you for your commitment to the board, to the district, thanks to the children of our community. I need a motion to adjourn.
No, 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 no. 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 Sorry, that was good.
All right.
I have, I have just a couple of things that I didn't hit with mine, but I want the public to know.
Board trepper.
First, we have to adjust the instructional calendar, because everybody's yelling at me right now, because of the snow days that I did not use, and we will put this out, and right now, we did not use pre, I'm not obligated to do this, but our kids do work very hard, and Memorial Day's coming, every other school district is pretty much going to be off now. I'm going to readjust the calendar for Friday, five twenty-three will be an instructional day off, and then Tuesday, five twenty-seven will also be an instructional day off. It will still leave me with one additional day if needed, but I'm saving that just because of these new weather requirements, but also because that gentleman, Mr. Goglin in the back, is going to have to try to pull off a miracle in the last week of June, that if we can figure it out, I may utilize another one, one of those last few days, just in case, but at least I can get through. So more to come on that, but right now, five twenty-three, five twenty-seven will change from being instructional days to being non-instructional days. Please remember, twelve-month people still have to work. It's, it's an issue, just so that we have that. In addition, we are still working on bus times and stuff, but we have at least confirmed they are within that plus or minus now five-minute window, so whatever the times on both ends are within plus or minus front, five to the front, five to the back, but because prepay is important, and we are just getting that information out, we know that we added forty-six minutes to the elementary day, so we would be likewise adding forty-six minutes to prepay. So that would put it from nine AM, we aren't changing that, it's still nine AM, and it would go until two forty-six. However, for next year, just for the first year, as we're sort of moving around, we will be going from nine to two thirty, and then twenty-six, twenty-seven, nine to two forty-six. So we're giving that out, and we just wanted to make sure people hear it, and we will communicate that out.
Can you say that again and slow down and collaborate?
So like this year, currently, prepay runs from nine o'clock until two o'clock. Help people. Nobody knew what time it was going to be, but with the elementary starting at forty, we can still start at nine o'clock. We extended everybody's day, we have to do the same to the prepay. That would go from nine to roughly two forty-six would be the equivalent, however, for one year only, we're shortening it by about sixty minutes to give coordination times in the first year, make sure everything's working. So that is also, so kids' world and the prepay signups, because we're about ten individuals short of having minimal enrollment, so we don't lose a, so if you know anybody out there that wants prepay, please tell them, come, sign up, it's full day, nine to two thirty for next year. Who are they going to get to, Kelly?
Building principal?
Building principal, get their name on a list, because we have room. Did it? That's all I got, I'm done. That's all I got, I'm done.
Okay, so I'm, I apologize ahead of time for doing this, especially if it turns into a big discussion, but, um... So one of our responsibilities as a board, a really important responsibility of the board, is to adopt the school budget. And I just, I wanted to kind of go back to just ask a couple of questions, because we did have a board member that we didn't know, and we had a board member that abstained. And I, I just personally would like to understand why, just because it is, one, it's not the most important thing that we do as a board. So I think it's important, particularly to really understand, and then also as a board, you know, we, we should be voting either, either yes or no. I mean, unless there's some sort of legal reason why, why we should be abstaining. So I just, you know, again, I'm sorry to add, add more time to this meeting, but it's just something that I'm passionate about. So I would like to, if everybody's okay with it, to ask if I'm...
So I voted no. So I'll say that I voted no, because I would have liked to see the budget without that admin added in, so we're at four point five. I don't feel it's fair to ask the committee to, although I will support the budget in public vote. I want to make sure that I, that everyone know that I think we should not be pushing it any higher than the four point five. So that was everything.
Can I just correct that to what you think is the point four five, not four point five, right?
Yeah, yeah.
What I said, just so that the...
Forty-eight, forty-five, so yes, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, I agree with what Julie said, but the reason I chose to not vote no, and the reason I also was choosing to abstain is because we just got full line item with everything, and I think that I should review all of that before I vote yes or no. I feel like it's my job to go through and look at everything as presented on all of the sheets and then to vote. To get it, to hit, to hit refresh, and then to vote yes or no. I, you know, I understand that it's their job, they do that, but I would have liked to look at all of the lines and then make a decision. So if it's kind of a little more time, and whether that's, you know, we come to this conclusion a couple of days before it has to be done, so that we have an opportunity to be able to review it all, and then go and vote yes or no, then that's what it is. But, you know, I do, I do support the budget, I would support the budget publicly to, to people. But that's why I voted, why I abstained, because that's what I, I feel should happen.
Chris?
Two comments, just first, reflecting on what Dr. Nova said when I made my comments before about the administrator and budget. And, you know, I didn't mean, I was kind of drawing a ridiculous comparison, but of course, all administrators are incredibly valued, they're all educators. And I appreciate you making that point, I just simply wanted to kind of call out the nature of the specific one being added. So I apologize for any unintentional, you know, inference of those comments I suggested. And then secondly, a more positive note, I, I had a fantastic opportunity today to speak to Ms. Hawkhorn's business law class, through the Career Development Council. In the, you know, I was invited to come and speak to them about contracts as a corporate lawyer, and amazingly, they stayed awake through that. And even more to my, um, even more to my amazement, and I say that, you know, some tongue shavings or break suits, but they had, they had a number of great questions at the end, right? And, and I stayed there the whole period and answered their questions, and they were insightful, and they were interested. And I really appreciated the opportunity, and it just, you know, it's a, it's a great example of the incredible things that, not me, but the teacher and the class, things that go on every day in our schools. So I'm thankful to Ms. Hawkhorn for that opportunity, and to the students for being such wonderful hosts. Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to share a reminder that this weekend is I Love White Ark Day in the Village. Of course, that's on the twenty-seventh, so Sunday, from noon to four. And I'd love to see fellow board members, for you, and picking up some litter and sticks, so I think it's beautiful.
Okay, I have a few things. First, I would like to thank our human resource, our people who run our plays and stuff have resigned, and I would like to thank them for the many hours and time that they've given to the students of Horsetes. The music department has been and is an awesome part of our district. And I just want to recognize you for the many, many hours that you give when you do the plays and all the extra things you do for the music department. And I just want to say thank you. Another thing I wanted to recognize is the family career and the kids who go to OCS, they went to Family Career and Community Leaders of America. And quite a few of our students who are seniors took gold, and they also attend the National, um, National Medal of Honor in July. And these are the things that they contributed at. Chapter Service, Fringe Portfolio, Holiday Helpers, Organized the Toy Drive, How Children Will Need. Jordan Longer, Andy Williams, and Caitlin Slade, they won gold. Another group was Focus on Children, Find Your Balance, Helping Parents and Children Finding a Balance, and Children Finding a Balance with Cellphone Use, which is a very important topic. Jay Fenton, Lise, you know, Lise Levin, Todd, I can't say his name, I'm sorry. Um, and City, City Low, they won gold. And another program, National Programs in Action, Forever Two-Six, Donate Life Organ, Donation Initiative, Memory Building Low. Leah Scott, Anna Loma, Jordan Schien, they won gold. And then another national action program in action, NACHERE, Anti-Gullying Initiative with C.A. and S.A. Caitlin Cook, Anna Loma, and Anna Romo, they also won gold. And I would just like to, you know, recognize these students for what they did at this conference, so thank you. And I have one more thing I have, I'm, I'm... Mary Ann, I'm not mad, it is your opinion, and yes, I am the monarch, monarch of these girls, but we are three individuals who don't always agree. But one thing we do agree is the love that we have for this district, and we want what's best for students, that, and for our community. And I know there's lots of opinions out there, I even have my opinion, go ahead and throw those out there, if that happens. And so I'm not mad, it's your opinion.
Thank you.
Erin?
I just wanted to state that our students are going to NISMA this weekend, New York City Music Association. And we have students all going from elementary up into high school. That will be performing in front of judges and being adjudicated on their music. And it's really exciting, and I know that they are all prepped and ready to go and excited and getting all dressed up and preparing for feedback and moving forward in their musical career, so it's exciting. They will be there Friday and Saturday.
Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss an individual personnel matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? When we return to public session, there will be no other business taken care of tonight, so, um, we will adjourn from executive session to a public session, and then adjourn and retaliate for the evening. So the public knows there will be no more, uh, public business done tonight.
And if you, if you do adjourn, take a five-minute break, it's the first one, and that way we can, we'll do it right here.
Okay.
Thank you all for coming out tonight.